So hello and welcome to this week's COVID-19 media briefing. It's the 18th of June 2021. I'm Steve Thorne and I work in the comms team at Nottingham City Council. I'm here with Abby Jaikman, who works in the comms team at Nottingham County Council. Our panel today, as always, is David Johns, who's the interim director of public health at Nottingham City, Jonathan Gribbin, director of public health for Nottingham County, and Amanda Sullivan, who's the accountable officer for Nottingham and Nottinghamshire NHS Clinical Commission Group. Usual format applies. If you could just remain on mute and with your camera off until you're due to ask a question. We'll start with opening statements from our panelists, then we'll open the floor to questions. It's one question, one follow-up question. And again, just remain on mute and keep your cameras off until it's your turn to ask. Raise your hand, we'll come to you in turn. Bear with me, I always say this every week, but there's a quirk of teams, which means that I can't always see hands raised. So if I don't come to you for any reason, do shout up, we won't miss you out, it's absolutely fine. So if everyone's happy, I'll hand over first to Amanda Sullivan from the NHS.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. I'm really pleased to say that the number of people in hospital with coronavirus remains low and stable. But we are aware that in other parts of the country, this position has changed very, very quickly when cases rise in the general population. So we are very mindful of that. And we are still seeing admissions to hospital, on average, more than one person a day in our area having serious levels of illness and needing to go into hospital. So we are in a race against time to vaccinate as many people as possible to minimise the chances that the Delta variant has to spread. And we do know that that is 60% more transmissible and that people after two vaccines are two to three times more protected than they would be after just an initial vaccine. So we are very much encouraging people to have both their first and their second vaccines to prevent the spread. So with that in mind, I'm really pleased that we're now able to offer vaccines to all adults as of today. So everyone over 18 in England is eligible for their vaccine. And we literally have thousands of appointments available across our sites over the next week. So please do go on to the National Booking Service, book your slot or ring 119. All of our sites now are on the National Booking Service. That includes our hospital vaccine hubs as well as the other main sites. We had a really, really successful walk-in weekend last weekend. And we'll be looking to boost walk-in opportunities and appointments as we go forward, recognising we have a younger cohort now of people coming forward for their vaccines. So for example, this weekend, you can walk into Kingsmill Hospital, 8 till 2 on Saturday and Sunday. And we will release further details of further walk-in opportunities for you on a regular basis. One of the other things that we're doing to try and maximise protection is to bring forward the second vaccines for 40 to 49-year-olds in the way that we did with over 50-year-olds as well. And the aim of this is to reduce the gap between your vaccines from 12 weeks down to eight weeks. And this is happening across the country. Some people may be asked to change their second appointment. And we are really asking people to keep your second appointment as well. That second dose is really critical, particularly with the Delta variant circulating as it is. So thank you, that's the end of my brief, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Could I hand over now to Jonathan Gribbin from Nottingham County Council?
Good morning, everyone. That's really fantastic news that we've heard there about the extension of eligibility on the vaccine programme. And I'm delighted that there are thousands of people across Nottinghamshire now who've received protection, not only against hospitalisation and infection, but actually also against some of the long-term impacts of COVID-19. And before I turn to talk about the case rates that we see in Nottinghamshire County and some of the things that we've got in place to address those, I first want to turn a little bit of attention to precisely that. And that's some of the long-term impacts of COVID or what for individuals is sometimes referred to as long COVID or post-COVID syndrome. The Office of National Statistics last month published a piece of work in which they found that there are more than a million people across the United Kingdom who reported experiencing symptoms of fatigue, muscle pains, shortness of breath, some other symptoms too, which they attributed to having had COVID-19. And in fact, nearly two-thirds of these experienced symptoms, which were severe enough to have a real negative impact on day-to-day activities like carrying out work, caring or parenting responsibilities, or getting on with their interests and ambitions. Now, we need to exercise some caution in how we interpret these results. But in overall terms, they strongly underline the threat which COVID-19 presents to busy people in the prime of life, going about their jobs, their caring, their parenting responsibilities, carrying on pastimes to meet their own ambitions and interests. And put simply, there is a risk that infection with COVID-19 will have a long-term impact on your quality of life or on the quality of life of people around you who might become infected. But as we've heard, the good news is that you can take action on that to protect yourself against those long-term impacts of COVID-19. And so to show COVID-19 the red card in Nottinghamshire, I'm wanting to urge everyone who's eligible once again to grab the jab now. Don't be too busy to book. And if you've had the first jab already, make sure that you follow up by getting the second dose, which will give you that full level of protection. And along with that, I'm also asking everyone to continue to test yourself twice weekly. It's easy enough, it's free, you can do it at home, you can pick up a test kit from a pharmacy or a number of other locations. And if we follow through on doing both of those things, I'm very confident that Nottinghamshire can enjoy full protection from COVID-19. And it will really help us to learn very safely with COVID-19. Now, let me turn to the near term. Because of course, what we've been seeing over the last week or two in Nottinghamshire County is an increase in rates. In fact, against an England average that now stands at something like 75 per 100,000, we see in Nottinghamshire that our headline rate now stands at 47 per 100,000. And that's pretty much doubled over the last week or so. And of course, that's reflected across many of our districts and boroughs. Some of them have not seen quite that level of increase, others have seen higher increase than that. If I was to pick out Rushcliffe in particular, over the last fortnight altogether, the rate there has increased almost tenfold, starting from a low point, but now reaching almost 100 per 100,000. I'm pleased to say that other districts and boroughs are not currently as high, but we are seeing increases there too. So in Gedling, we now see a rate of 60 per 100,000, in Brockstow, 57 per 100,000, Ashfield, 48.5 per 100,000. In Newark and Sherwood, things have been a little steadier, but the rate there already is 31 per 100,000. In Mansfield, the rate is still at 18 per 100,000, and in Bassetlaw, 15 per 100,000. Where we've seen sharp increases, and indeed even in districts and boroughs where the rates have remained steady, we're seeing the younger people and young adults disproportionately represented in those figures. So particularly children of secondary school age, also young adults 18 to 22. And in fact, it also extends to adults up to about the age of 40. We've continued to see cases in a range of different settings. So in some cases, in school settings, in one or two workplaces, in at least one care setting, in hospitality settings and in social settings. Now, in some circumstances, people are going about their business, being very careful and diligent to comply with all of the restrictions and guidance that remain in place at step three of the roadmap. But in other cases, we find that people perhaps have dropped their guard. And that's resulted in a spread of infection and in some cases, a very sharp rise in rates. So as a result of that, across the county, we continue to work very closely with our districts and boroughs. For example, later on today, we'll be standing up an outbreak control team to explore what further support we might be able to provide to one of our schools, which has seen a sharp rise in cases. We're also working very closely with colleagues like those in Rushcliffe Borough Council, who in particular have been warning pubs, bars and restaurants, restaurant owners over the last few days to keep following the COVID-19 operating rules at this time. And with this evening's game in mind, I particularly want to urge people across Nottinghamshire to keep onside with your social distancing. If you're meeting up with friends to watch this evening's match, so that means a maximum of six people indoors or two households, please stick to that because it helps to stop the spread from getting any further across Nottinghamshire. In terms of space, please arrange the furniture and the room so that you can maintain a distance of at least one metre and preferably two metres from one another. It's warm at the moment in any case, but make sure you open the windows, get some ventilation and fresh air circulating because that also helps to stop the spread. Thank you, that concludes my update for the moment.
Thank you, Jonathan. We'll hand over now to David Johns for what's happening in Nottingham City.
Cheers, thank you very much. And to give a little bit of repetition, Jonathan and I are on a similar wavelength today, so there may be some repetition, but I think it's some important messages to make really clear. So in Nottingham City, in the seven days up to the 12th of June, we saw 192 cases. So that's an 88% increase on the previous week. And the case rate now sits at just below 90 cases per 100,000. Now, rates have also continued to rise across England with a 50% rise in the last seven days. And that puts the England average at 75 per 100,000 population. In Nottingham City, rates in the 12 to 17-year-olds have stabilised. They have been increasing, but they plateaued, but they do remain high. But the increase in the last seven days has largely been driven by increases in the 18 to 22-year-old age band or the 23 to 39-year-old age band. Case rates amongst those over 60 in Nottingham remain very low and that continues to be a real positive. As Amanda mentioned, we've not seen a subsequent increase in COVID-19 pressure on hospitals. And this may in part be due to the cases currently increasing amongst those younger age groups. However, it's important that because we don't immediately see that impact of cases in our hospitals, we don't believe that these cases are consequence-free. The Office for National Statistics estimates that a million people in the UK would report long COVID symptoms that persist for at least four weeks. And of those 800,000 experienced them for at least 12 weeks. And these long-lasting symptoms are certainly not trivial and can have an impact on people's ability to live their day-to-day lives, including amongst younger adults. So these figures really reinforce the importance of our efforts to keep rates low and reduce transmission and encourage everyone to take up the opportunity to be vaccinated, be they in their 20s, 30s, 40s or older. At 8pm tonight, England and Scotland kick off at Wembley. And I ask that those coming to Nottingham to watch the match remember that restrictions are stood in place. I know that the vast majority of pubs and restaurants are respecting the restrictions and operating responsibly. But they do need your help. If you are going out to watch the match tonight, please use the NHS Track and Trace QR codes or provide your details to the venue. Don't queue for drinks or food as venues should be offering a table service in place indoors and outdoors at all times. Try not to mix with other tables indoors as well and stick to the groups that you've attended with and booked with. And please wear a face mask when moving about within a premises. If you are having friends over, please remember only six people or two households can meet indoors still. And you should be looking to take simple steps to reduce that risk of transmission, to try and maintain social distancing and opening windows to allow pair to circulate to reduce the risk of transmission. There's also still time today to go out and pick up a rapid COVID-19 test if you haven't got one already. And if you haven't got symptoms, you can use that to, within 30 minutes, get a result. And you can pick those up from your local pharmacist or one of our community testing sites. There is more good news about vaccines, but the current real-world data suggesting they are still working well against severe disease and weakening that link between cases and hospitalisation, particularly amongst those who've had both of their vaccination doses. And a big thank you to NHS and council colleagues who helped put on the big weekend this last weekend. And really a big thank you to all those that showed up to make it a success. But if you missed that opportunity, then don't worry, booking is still open now to everyone 18 years and over. And also for those who are 40 years and over, you can still able to walk in and whenever they feel ready or able to take up the offer of the vaccine. And I'll end there.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Amanda. Really comprehensive picture of what's happening in Nottinghamshire at the moment. We're going to throw it open to questions. Again, if you just, when you ask your question, if you could just let us know where you're from, just so we know who you're representing and where you're asking the question from, that'd be really helpful. I'll ask them in the order that I've seen the hands appear. The first one is Abby Hunt, Abby.
Hi there, yeah, I'm from the Newark Advertiser. Just something responding to what Jonathan said. He said, you know, there was a slightly higher increase within Rushcliffe. I was just wondering what school you are currently working with in Rushcliffe and whether that school was accountable for the rise in cases in Rushcliffe?
Abby, thank you for the question. So we, the public health team, working with Public Health England, are providing support, input and advice across a whole range of settings across the county. And that does include schools who've worked so hard to put in place really good arrangements to keep staff and students safe. It includes workplaces of other sorts, care settings and so on. There is a meeting that we've stood up for this afternoon to make sure that we've got really good support in place for one particular school. It's not one that needs warrants naming, it's not exceptional in that sense at all. It certainly doesn't account for everything that we're seeing. And I'd also want to add, by way of acknowledgement and thanks to our young people, many of whom are going about school and social life, paying special regards to the restrictions and guidance that are in place at the moment. So just because we see some cases in a particular school setting, for example, isn't necessarily an indication that there is a problem in the school per se. But we want to make sure that we leave no stone unturned in providing really strong support to school leaders and staff in the arrangements that they've put in place.
Okey-dokey, thanks.
Thanks, Abby. Do you have a follow-up question?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. The next hand up is Joe Locker.
Hi guys, it's Joe from the Nottingham Post. Good to see you all again. So my question again, I guess, relates to the rising cases across Rushcliffe and Nottingham in particular. So obviously, just this week, government advisers have worn that a third or I guess fourth wave, depending on how you look at it, has begun. So I guess, could you consider that to be the case here in Nottinghamshire? I mean, or when would such another wave be likely? Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Perhaps if I, I'll start off from a county perspective, but very much relates to the city as well, of course. And Joe, thank you for the question. So if we go back several months ago, in this meeting and in other contexts, we were hearing about modelling from Sage, which was showing that in all likelihood, during this calendar year, we would see a third wave. And at that time, that modelling didn't even account for the emergence of, or the potential emergence of a new variant with perhaps increased transmissibility. So Joe, you're quite right. What we now see across the United Kingdom is a general increase in rates driven strongly by this new Delta, or relatively new Delta variant, which is now the dominant variant, which is considerably more easily passed on than the Alpha variant. And yes, Nottinghamshire, together with the rest of the country, now finds itself at what looks to be the early stages of a third wave. What we don't know at the moment, and is still to some extent within our control, is how sharp the peak of that third wave will be and how long it will endure. And it is in our control, to the extent that it's still within our gift individually and collectively to be sticking with all of the guidance and the restrictions that remain in place at step three. And some of that we've referred to already. So I'm urging people right across Nottinghamshire County, in view of the increase, to keep all of those measures in mind. It's not much longer that we need to keep going. But by keeping going with those restrictions, we are still buying ourselves a little extra time to complete the full programme of vaccination so that as many people in Nottinghamshire are protected, not only from hospitalisations and from severe complications which would land them in hospital, but also from those long-term effects that David and I have spoken about, which leave people feeling fatigued, lacking in energy, some people even, to the extent that they're unable to carry out ordinary activities of daily living. So yes, I think we find ourselves at the start of a third wave, but there's still plenty that each of us can do to influence how things turn out.
Thank you, Jonathan. And David, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so I'll just add my perspective, I suppose. So 98% of the new cases in Nottingham City are the Delta variant. So this is now the variant that we're living with. It's a variant we know is more transmissible and has a high likelihood of hospitalisation. But that vaccination, particularly having two doses, is still particularly effective against. Now Nottingham was one of those first places in the country with that significant cluster of Delta cases. And until the last couple of weeks, we'd successfully worked with citizens to hold off an increase in rates that other areas, particularly in the North West, had seen. But in the last few, couple of weeks, we have seen those rates start to increase and do so quite quickly, albeit in a younger age band. And I think it's important to remember that the situation we find ourselves in this year remains significantly more positive than when we had previous waves in 2020 at the beginning of 2021. Because, you know, we have that privilege of access to an effective and quite rapidly expanding vaccination programme that's now reaching 18 and overs today. So yes, this is, it appears to be the beginning of an increase in cases. There is plenty we can do to slow that increase and reduce the risk of transmission. And the delay to stage four has bought some time for the vaccination programme to vaccinate as many people as possible, particularly those over 40 who are having their second dose of vaccination, to get the maximum protection they can have as well. So similar to Jonathan's answer, I suppose, is that increasing in cases is significant and important to recognise, but there's still plenty we can do to make a difference to where that goes next.
Thank you, David. Joe, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, thanks guys, that's brilliant. So the follow-up question is regarding, obviously, it's been nationally reported that there may be a vaccine shortage, particularly Pfizer. So I just wanted to check what the situation was here in Nottinghamshire. I mean, obviously, we spoke to people who are concerned about, you know, if they book a bit of time off work to get the job and then they arrive and they can't get it or something of a similar situation. So what, could we expect a shortage going forward or? Thanks.
So we manage the supply of vaccine across the region and the country. And we are assured that there is enough vaccine for everybody to have their vaccination in line with the commitments that we've made. So that all adults would have the opportunity to have their vaccine by the, the first vaccine by the 19th of July. And that's been brought forward from the 31st of July. And that two-thirds of adults have been offered and had the opportunity to have their second dose, so are fully vaccinated. So we are planning our appointments in line with that over the next few weeks. We have literally thousands of appointments available for people to come forward. And we will make sure that booking, you know, if people book their appointment, we will book that in line with where we have the vaccines available at the sites. So that is our, that's what we're currently doing.
Thank you, Amanda. Thanks for the question, Joe. Next hand up is Hugh Caswell.
Good morning, everyone. Very much enjoying all the footballing analogies in the health messaging, by the way. I hope you have enough to last till the end of the tournament. This, to Amanda, this sort of follows on from what Joe was asking there. And the closure of the Forest Recreation Ground site yesterday obviously caused quite a bit of frustration for some people. And you've said it's because staff were redeployed elsewhere because there weren't many bookings at the forest and not as that sign outside suggested because there were no vaccines. Now presumably, if you're moving staff around, you have to plan for that, you have to tell the staff. So why could you not tell people who were booked that it would be closed beforehand before they turned up? And is that something you'll aim to do in the future if appointments have to be cancelled?
Yes, thank you. Yes, absolutely. We do text people if, at relatively short notice, we will try and keep it to an absolute minimum if we have to redeploy staff. But we will text people on the number that they are registered on. So absolutely, we will make sure that people are aware if that does happen, but we will keep it to a minimum.
There were about 10,000 fewer jobs done last week than each of the previous weeks. So why is that if it's not because of supply? And do you expect to be doing fewer jobs in the coming weeks as well? And just to be completely clear, are you saying there has been no recent reduction in supply of vaccines in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire?
We haven't experienced a reduction in supply. We have, in fact, we've had spare capacity in our sites over recent weeks. And we are really asking people to come forward, particularly in the 40 to 49 age groups. We'd really strongly encourage people to come forward. And we're seeing good uptake in the younger age groups. So we are keen on that. And we are planning to make sure that we can do enough vaccines to meet the criteria that I mentioned earlier by July the 19th. So that will be in our plan in terms of how much we do, week on week, in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Amanda. Hugh, do you have a follow-up question?
No, I think that's all, thank you.
Wonderful, thanks, Hugh. Next hand up was Owen Shipton.
Hi, Owen Shipton from NOTS TV. Just a question on uptake among young people. Do you have any sense how popular it's been since they were allowed to book or even? Do you have any sense how popular it's been since they were allowed to book or even walk in and have an appointment?
Yes, it's early days in terms of the younger, but really encouraged actually with, we talked earlier about the real success of the walk in weekend last weekend, the grab a jab, really, really pleased with that. We had almost 2,500 people come forward, over and above what was booked, so that was brilliant. And as I say, there's another, tomorrow you can walk in at the King's Mill site as well. So we're very much encouraging and encouraged by those early signs in the younger population.
Great, thank you. No follow up from me, I think that has been ticked off.
Brilliant, thank you, Owen. Andy Doan Johnson.
Morning, everyone.
Hi, Andy.
Hi. Question, I think for Amanda specifically, talking about the walk in at King's Mill over the weekend. What would be your expectation or hope for a number of people attending? And what would be the target age groups that you'd like to see turning up at the site?
Thank you. So I mean, we really would, we would encourage anybody who is in that area and able to get there, who hasn't had their first vaccine to come along. We are encouraging all age groups, so the door is open for everybody, all adults. So if people have been reluctant to come forward before or have had other reasons, I would say now is really the time to do that. You've heard about cases rising, you've heard about the more infectious Delta variant. So if you've been a little bit cautious before, do come forward. And there are people there that can go through any concerns that you've had with you. So you know, talk, come along and talk through those concerns. So, and we are, you know, obviously this is now open to all adults, so we are encouraging all age groups, and particularly those who haven't come forward up to now, who are in those more vulnerable groups.
Thank you, Amanda. Andy, do you have any follow up questions?
That's great, no, thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy. The last hand I can see is Alex Meakin.
Hello, everyone. Alex from Gem Radio here. Just a couple of questions, one for Jonathan, first of all, on schools. Obviously, given everything that we talked about, do we think that it might be necessary to introduce extra measures? And my second question, just, we've spoken a lot about the vaccine and how important it's been in the fight against coronavirus. My question is, how bad would this situation be if this Delta variant had appeared much sooner before we had the vaccine rollout as it is now? How bad a situation would we be in, in that situation?
Okay, thanks, Alex. So two questions there. Jonathan, should we just take the first question?
Yeah, Alex, thank you for your question, which I think was focused on schools specifically and the, you were asking about the possibility of the need for extra measures in schools generally. Right from the start of the roadmap, nationally and locally, we've been very focused on wanting to enable our schools to be fully open to all of their students. Of course, they were all working extremely hard right the way through last year to remain open to many students, but in, by March, we were very focused on them being able to do that in a much fuller way. And at this stage, we want to make sure that we're putting in place arrangements which enable schools and the rest of the community to live safely with COVID-19. At the moment, there are arrangements we're making to follow up with some schools, simply to check whether there's anything further that we or they can do to strengthen the good arrangements they've already got in place. But at the moment, I'm not yet looking at some sort of generalised application of additional measures. Rather, as far as I possibly can, I want to support our school leaders, their staff and parents of students to keep our children and young people in school through to the end of term, as far as is possible. I think there was a second question, which I didn't properly register.
Not a worry, do you want me to repeat it?
That'd be helpful, thanks, Alex.
Yeah, sorry, guys. So the second question was, obviously we've spoken a lot about the vaccine and how important it is and the fight against coronavirus and how we've been able to, these cases are showing up much more in younger people and the people built up in immunity through the vaccine now aren't getting as ill as they would. My question is, how serious a situation would we have been in if this Delta variant had come about before we'd rolled out properly a vaccination programme?
Well, I'll start with a brief comment and then, if I may, and then invite my colleagues to comment. If we look and take a national view of this, thousands of lives have been saved by the rollout of the vaccine so far. If we'd not had that, but were trying to deal with a more transmissible variant, I can only think that even more lives would have been lost. So we're in a very positive position compared to what we would have been in. I think it is important to remember though, that as well as promoting the vaccine programme and ensuring that everyone in Nottinghamshire has opportunity to take up the offer of a jab, it will also be important to bear in mind that the vaccine on its own is unlikely to be sufficient for us to completely contain COVID-19 in perpetuity. So in the long run, we're likely to be needing to keep in mind a number of other arrangements. Now, I think those will become clearer to us over the coming weeks and we'll need to apply those in a way that enables our schools and our local economy and communities all to flourish, but to do it in a way which is living safely with COVID-19.
Thank you, Jonathan. David, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I think having the vaccination is obviously a huge and significant factor in what impact the rising cases has and how we're dealing with a variant that is more transmissible, more likely for you to end up in hospital with. And, you know, I think the vaccination is key to reducing the impact of this current increase in cases. What I would sort of highlight is that the race between sort of infections and vaccinations, particularly over the next four weeks with the delay to stage four, is still something that's ongoing. And, you know, the vaccination programme isn't finished, it's now opened up to all adults, but it needs people to come forward and receive their vaccination and for those who are eligible and ready for their second dose to come forward and have their second dose. So it's a real positive that we have it, and we just need to capitalise on that opportunity now and get as many people vaccinated and protected as possible. And then I'd also just highlight as well that, you know, vaccination isn't, you know, whilst we're both saying that if we didn't have vaccinations, the impact would have been significantly worse, but what we're also saying is that vaccinations aren't the golden ticket. There are other things that we need to be doing, particularly those people at the moment who are having their first dose, waiting for their second dose, ensuring that we follow the restrictions that are in place, maintaining that social distancing and following the restrictions of our indoor gatherings and face masks, so that we continue to keep rates low and protect vulnerable citizens while they go out and get their second dose of the vaccination.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Alex, for the question.
Thank you very much.
No problem. I was going to pause just very briefly, because like I say, I don't always see hands that are up. So I just want to make sure everyone who wants to ask a question has had the opportunity to speak to our panellists. Okay, if everyone's happy, what I'll do, I'll just briefly turn back to our panellists. I just want to check that we've covered everything or if there's any closing remarks, any final points you'd like to get across while we have the media with us.
For me, I suppose it's just driving home that point that I hope that everyone who is heading into Nottingham this evening to watch the football has a great time and enjoys that football, but does so responsibly and taking into account that restrictions are still in place and working with our hospitality sector to help them protect everyone from transmission of coronavirus.
Thank you, David. Jonathan, would you like to add anything?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
Wonderful, great. Amanda?
Nothing further from me, thank you.
Okay, this remains then for me to say thank you to David, Jonathan and Amanda, as always, for your time and being here. Thanks to Abby for supporting and to media colleagues as well, for keeping the public informed about progress in tackling COVID-19. I'm around today as Abby, if you have any further questions, otherwise I wish you a happy Friday. Enjoy the game if you're going to watch it and have a lovely weekend. Thank you, everyone.
Cheers.
Thanks.